Be cognizant of this in any comments which you make during the course of this meeting. I would also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking, remind me to do that too. And for any councillors or officers who are attending virtually, please use the mute button when you are not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I would ask that you remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors to your left and down the stairwell to exit onto Bloomfield Street. All members of the public present at the meeting must, not without the prior approval of the chairperson, make any audio or video recording or take any photographs, remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way, not bring into the meeting any signs, placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any person present, be suitably dressed, and turn all mobile devices to silent mode and leave the meeting to take any calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements and may, with or without such warning, require the person to leave the meeting and not return for such period as the chairperson desires. This period may include future meetings. Alright, um, agenda item number two, I have not been advised of any leave of absence. Um, I'd like to now remind councillors to sign the attendance sheet for today's general meeting, which can be found on diligent boards. This must be completed before the meeting concludes. On agenda item number three, we have a devotional segment and I'd now like to invite, and I hope I pronounce this correctly, Pastor Mariska DeRies from C3 Redland Bay to lead council in a brief devotional segment.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for your time and the opportunity for me to share this morning. I hope something I want to say this morning will encourage you a little bit. So now whether we believe in Jesus or not, it is and it does not and it will not ever change our duty of care towards our neighbours or those people around us. I know we can all say that we've had times where we faced difficulty in our lives, times where we had loss, where we had um pressure, work pressure or relationship breakdowns. But in saying that, how often do we see people coming together in times when there is natural disasters? In times where there is stress and pressure on them, coming together and working together to help one another? You know, I think about the floods that happened, how many people came out to give of their time and their resources to help one another in times of need? We have seen the horrific events in Sydney, how many people put their own lives in danger to help their neighbour around them? Oftentimes, people say, why, if God loves us so much, do bad things happen? Well, the thing is, bad things will always happen, but there are always good people that step up. The question I like asking myself is, why is our default behaviour to help, to love and to offer assistance in time? Why do we naturally do it? Now, yes, we know there are people around us that will look the other way, that will ignore situations when things get tough, but they are also those people around us, like the good Samaritan in the Bible, that actually cross the road and help those in need, that regardless of religious beliefs, regardless of stature or race or culture, they will do whatever it takes to help those people in need. And I know that every single one of us here today is one of those good Samaritans, because you wouldn't put your hand up to serve your city if you weren't available to help those in need. I will ask that as we serve in our city, that our default behaviour, actions and decisions of those guided by the love for our neighbour and the love for our city. We cannot love others if we do not love ourselves. And the Bible says in Matthew twenty twenty-two that the greatest commandment is to love others as we love ourselves. And in order for us to love ourselves, we actually have to be people that are great at self assessing. So when there are things we are going through, in order to love others, we need to love ourselves firstly. The thing I do want to add is it is very hard at times to love others if they have come against us, if they have done something against us, but we've got a God that's given us grace and he's given us wisdom to, in those times, have something to help us to love our neighbour as we love ourselves. Now, I want to come to my last point and it is on wisdom. It says in Ecclesiastes ten ten, using adult acts requires great strength. So sharpen the blade, that's the value of wisdom, it helps you succeed. Plainly saying is, we need to be people that go and equip ourselves in order to be wise in those times where we are facing difficult situations. Abraham Lincoln also once said, and I love this quote so much, that, give me six hours to chop down a tree and I'll spend four of those six hours sharpening my axe. So we should be people that go away, spend some time to reflect on ourselves, get wisdom before we face any opportunity that is difficult in our lives. I want to encourage us today to be people that love our neighbours as we love ourselves, to be people that are great at self assessing and being self-aware and to be people that carry wisdom into every single difficult situation we have. Let's pray. Look, I would just thank you for today, Father, and I pray for every single one of the people in this place today and online. Father God, I pray that we will be people that are like the good Samaritan, those people that love our neighbour as we love ourselves, help us to have the wisdom we need to sharpen ourselves, to be able to make a difference in those challenging situations that we face every single day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Thank you.
Councillors, I'm aware of three condolences today and I ask councillor Hughes, who I believe, um, I will start with you and then we'll hand over to subsequent councillors.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. Both councillor Bishop and myself have lost two incredibly different gents from Berkdale this past month. Indeed, their loss has been felt across our whole city. And we would like to pay tribute to them jointly, noting that both gents gave so much of themselves that I'm sure you'll be able to relate and smile along with us as we remember them.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Good morning, everybody. Well, councillor Hughes will primarily focus this morning on celebrating the life of Walter Graves, the flower man at Berkdale, an irrepressibly positive legend, who'll be greatly missed by many of our residents. And I pay my sincere condolences to his family and friends. I would like to take a moment to honour the remarkable life of another former resident of Berkdale and Thornside, ninety-four-year-old Brian Parminter, a much-loved local gentleman with a wickedly charming sense of humour, whose funeral was held on the twelfth of March twenty twenty-four. Brian was a loving father, husband three times, and friend to many who left a lasting impact on all who were fortunate enough to know him. He was born on Valentine's Day nineteen thirty as Fred Brian Parminter, and Brian was raised during the depression in Melbourne. He lived in New Zealand for thirty years and spent most of the last sixty years of his life, primarily on a quarter acre block in Thornside and then later in Berkdale. His father Charlie was one of the Kiwi veterans who landed at Anzac Cove on the very first day. He instilled a great work ethic in his son. Brian excelled in sports like cricket, um, swimming, rugby and athletics, a love of which he instilled in his four children. He worked as a professional grower, a marketeer, an aviation freight worker with Anset well into his seventies. And when people asked him how long, how old he was and how long before he was going to retire, he'd bend over and touch his toes and say, if you can do that, I'll tell you. He was one of those characters. He had three sons and a daughter, Linda, who were all grateful for the love that he instilled in them of sport, singing, dancing and sharing homegrown meals together. Brian loved growing rosellas, charming local farmers and making use of their vacant land as he grew rosella jam and made rosella jam. One year he won first prize uh at the Redlands Show for the jam and another year he produced ten thousand jars homemade to fund his retirement and the local sports club, which most significantly for us, Brian was the founder and the key driver in the creation of Thornsides Maroon Do Sport and Recreation Reserve and Clubhouse. In nineteen eighties, when there were many local children in the area, Brian realised that the kids had to travel a long way to get access to sport in the wider area. And but he noticed that there was a large parcel of vacant unimproved land on Maroon Do Road with drainage issues. So he had to plan. He got together, spoke to council, he got together with people, spoke to council and they created a solution to fix a problem by making a sports field by hand that would have cost us in current terms, probably tens of millions of dollars. I remember Brian telling me that when the Gateway Motorway in nineteen eighty was first being constructed, they had a problem, they needed to get rid of large piles of dirt out of Nudge Good Dirt, which was just what Maroon Do needed to feel, to fix their flooding issues. So he negotiated for trucks to bring the excess fill to Thornside where it sat in piles, many in some cases for years, which was great for the local BMX riders. But the committee had no money. However, Brian had a big old valiant and a huge vision. So he towed this massive telegraph pole attached to his tow bar and two ropes attached to the to the pole until he flattened out the fields. And since then, thousands of students, of young players and visitors have used that grounds ever since. He was the president of Maroon Do Sport and Recreation Club for many years and he worked tirelessly with other committee members for decades. He was a proud card-carrying life member number one and the club president, the club members presented him a special jersey during a recent anniversary, which he had adorned on his funeral casket. The William Taylor Sports Reserve, the clubhouse and the area is now home to football, netball, cricket, um, which and tennis, which provides services to hundreds of local families. Brian always loved working with others and delighted in coming back to the club to tell his jokes, have a cuppa, share stories, remind everyone to have fun. He was a joker, a gentleman and quite a terror on his mobility scooter as he used to zip around the area, but he was a beloved figure of Thornside, Berkdale and the wider Redlands community. He'll be missed by many members of the Alex Hills Men's Shed, um, the Maroon Do Football Club, many friends in Berkdale, Thornside and across Redlands. We send condolences to his dear wife, Leva, and her daughter, as well as Brian's family. While his legacy will resonate for years within the soil of his beloved Maroon Do Football Club, his spirit will live in our hearts forever. Vail Brian Parminter, he will be missed. Thanks very much.
Yeah, indeed he will. And my reflection of Brian comes from personally knowing him by the Alex Hills Men's Shed and watching him from afar, as literally he did drive that mobility scooter up Bailey Road. And Bailey Road's quite wide, as we know, and it's got a verge. Well, Brian actually used the verge and the lane and maybe a bit of the other side of the road, but obviously it worked for him and we all gave him a wide berth. But we all knew who he was, we really did, as we drove along, oh, there's Brian. I visited him at Christmas with his beautiful wife, Leva, and Le- Le- Leva had decorated their little lounge area and she was obviously his primary caregiver and vet. Very rarely did they leave the house. And we were chatting away and Brian was sitting in his chair, very, very frail, obviously. And he was a tall man and he jumped into the conversation, wanting to know what we were talking about. Well, we're talking about you, Brian. Oh, okay then, well, that's all right. And he gave us a joke and Mrs Parminter, she just laughed and she was so happy that he still had his sparkle. And I'll remember that right to the end. So thank you, thank you councillor Bishop. Now I'd like to pay tribute to Walter Graves. And he is our internationally known flower man from Berkdale. He was born in April nineteen thirty-three and he recently passed away at age ninety-one. But actually, he was only a couple of days shy of ninety-two, so we'll give him ninety-two. He is young with a legendary spirit of amazing faith, but also he had a dodgy heart for years and years and years. And that heart was filled to overflowing with goodwill. He was simply an ordinary bloke that did nothing more than sharing that huge spirit of his by smiling and waving and sharing kind words. His generous heart touched so many lives in the most amazingly positive ways that transformed him from that ordinary bloke to an extraordinary bloke that will long be remembered here in our city. With simply too many stories to share about Walter, I just wanted to share a couple of quotes that stand out of his generous spirit. One day, a rather rough-looking young man covered in tattoos pulled up and got out of his yoke and immediately his wife Val began to worry. Walter didn't flinch, he greeted the chap with a handshake and a big smile. And Walter had the most beautiful smile. The chap had simply stopped to say, as he passed Walter most days, quoting, "You make my day, mate", and he handed Walter fifty bucks and kept going. Another day, a chap going through a really tough time stopped and bought a five-dollar plant. He gave Walter twenty bucks and said, did he have been so uplifted by Walter that he now had hope for the future? Val remembers, Val obviously being his wife, sorry, I should have said, Val remembers a couple of driving parts that were in the area looking for property. And they stopped a chat with Walter and they were so moved that they did indeed purchase a home in the area. Their comment was that listening to all the toots and beeps and waving that was coming back to Walter as they chatted on the side of the road, that obviously we really did have a brilliant community here in Berkdale and they did buy. One day, a young lady stopped who had had a bad day at work and wanted to buy herself some flowers and she was planning to resign from her work. Her quote, "Thanks, Walter, for being here for me and chatting. I'll take your positive advice." Thanks for caring, giving him a hug and a smile in return. And the lady that put Walter on our international map was a lady that inadvertently um, just turned him into a viral superstar and us in the, in the um, the overflow. She stopped one day to buy a bunch of flowers only to discover, as most of us probably do sometimes, that she actually didn't have five dollars. Uh, so she walked away, oh, sorry, and walked away. But of course, our Walter was not having that. He gave the lady the bunch of flowers and said, next time you drive past, leave the five dollars in the letterbox. And if you don't have it, that's okay, just take the flowers for free, just take the flowers. And you can imagine Walter in this conversation with his gentle determination and that beautiful smile. You couldn't argue with Walter, you just could not. The lady was so touched, she jumped on her local Facebook group and shared a story of the Berkdale flower man and how overwhelmed she was by his trust and positivity. From there, it went worldwide and the iconic picture of Walter with his now famous black sombrero hat, smile and of course, a bunch of flowers. And I'm sure this hopefully will go up on the big screen for anyone watching. And there's the um, sombrero again with Walter with a flower in his, in his um mouth. And that was the last paid the pain tribute when he passed. There was so much to share about Walter, but I want to leave the lasting image of his smile and imagine if we could all harness a tiny parcel of his spirit and simply smile each day to someone that we don't know, the impact is enormous. Uh, thank you, Walter. Vail, our Walter Graves.
Thank you councillor Hughes and councillor Bishop. Councillor Talty, did you have words as well?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. We paused this morning to remember one of council's own staff. Uh, it's with great sadness that uh we know Randall Burgess has recently passed away. Randall worked for Redland City Council for forty-two years. Many of the staff at Redland City Council have known Randall for these countless years and even beyond that. He spent his entire life in the Redlands and joined the council's former engineering works operations, road maintenance on the seventh of December nineteen eighty-one, not long after leaving school. He spent most of his working life in maintenance, carrying out various roles across Redlands uh City Operations Group. Council has recognised Randall's forty years of service in twenty twenty-one. And although he was frail, he recently visited the depot to attend a team barbecue and get back in touch with all of his friends at work. Some of our local employees have, have a shared history with Randall that does go all the way back to attending Cleveland State High School together, where Randall, though initially reserved upon meeting him, left a lasting impression with everyone he met. After school, Randall dedicated his entire adult life to serving this community through Redland City Council. He was the kind of person who willingly took on tasks that most would shy away from, like the difficult job of retrieving animals from roadsides. But Randall didn't just do his job, he approached it with unwavering passion and professionalism. He even convinced the council to invest in a microchip identification machine, ensuring that loved pets lost on the roads could be reunited with their owners for a proper farewell, which is a very nice legacy for those who will continue to be touched by that. Throughout his career, Randall was known for his reliability, often working long hours to ensure that everything was taken care of. No matter the time of day, you could always count on him to answer the call with his trademark response, "No worries, mate, leave it with me". And true to his word, he would follow up a few hours later, letting you know that everything was sorted. Beyond his dedication to work, Randall was also an avid golfer. Weekends would often find him on the greens with his social club where his skill more than once earned him a place on the champions honour board of Redland Bay Golf Course. Randall was held in very high regard by his colleagues and he was well known for his dedication to work and community. Before finding his passion for golf, Randall dabbled in squash, dance and tenpin bowling. But perhaps what everyone will miss most about Randall, Randall is his warm greeting each morning across the depot, that familiar "Mate", that never failed to brighten someone's day. Randall touched the lives of so many here at Redland City Council and with mourn his passing, he leaves us with a legacy to celebrate of kindness, dedication and camaraderie. And we hope that he rests in peace. Randall, you will be dearly missed.
Thank you councillor Talty. Excuse me, we move to agenda item number four, recognition of achievement. Do we have any councillors who would like to present a recognition of achievement? Councillor Poglari, thank you.
Thank you. Um, today we have the opportunity to acknowledge yet another amazing Redland City Council staff member and celebrate and thank her for the incredible contribution she has made to both Redland City and Redland City Council for nearly two decades. Deborah Corbett Hall has been an employee of Redland City Council for nearly eighteen years. Her skills and acumen, there she is. Her skills and acumen, including her patience and plain English explanations of financial statements for councillors or anyone seeking financial clarification, are second only to her gentle and caring nature for all those who she works with. To go back to the start, Deborah started with council on Wednesday, the twenty-second of November two thousand and six, working in the mayor's office as a casual administration assistant with the important job of licking stamps, filing the local papers in chronological order, rearranging files and dusting the display cabinets. And although these jobs do continue to be important to this day, I think we can all agree it's a far cry from the responsibilities Deb currently has in her position. It was evident even back then that Deb was a team player, respectful, happy to assist and always calm in demeanour. Deb can identify the concern and speak with knowledge and clarity regarding the process. So there's a greater understanding and many residents also are grateful for her knowledge and sincere care factor. There are funny stories of Deb, there's quite a few actually, Deb. But one story that is still making staff smoke about was when she nearly fell into one of the shredding bins with her determination to retrieve documents that had been incorrectly discarded. So everything got total concentration from you. Deb is a crafter who wouldn't ask anything of her team she wouldn't undertake herself. And this is a characteristic, characteristic of a proficient leader. Deb then moved into finance, luckily for us, as an undergrad business student in, in April two thousand and seven and was known as the pom who couldn't pronounce data works or the colour maroon correctly. And that is very important at certain times of the year. It was during this time she achieved her second degree in accounting and very soon won the hearts of her colleagues with her open, friendly and all-inclusive manner, which impressed management along with her skill set, attention to detail and leadership skills. In two thousand and eleven, she stepped into the role of service manager to fill an unplanned vacancy and subsequently ran the whole budget process on her own with just one, just one casual administration support staff officer, and that was no mean feat. In two thousand and thirteen, she was nominated by her team for the CEO Awards for Leadership and Justifiably Won. In May two thousand and sixteen, following a very competitive and external merit-based process, Deb won the role of Chief Financial Officer at Redland City Council. Deb is leading at the pinnacle of what a CFO can achieve in an organisation. Under her leadership, the organisation has achieved consistent clean external audit opinions every year. Under Deb's tenure as CFO, council has received very few and any minor audit recommendations, which is a significant accomplishment for any organisation. She has developed a strong and effective internal control environment, which has been commended by the Queensland Audit Office, never missed a statutory deadline and with working with some of us, that was no doubt a challenge, built a strong financial position resulting in council being financially sustainable over the long term. Her dedication as a trusted custodian of Redland City Council rate payer's money is well known throughout the organisation, as well as her occasional Jerry Maguire moments of brilliance to bring the budget home. She leaves the council in a strong financial position with two hundred and fifty-eight million in the bank and Redland City Council is one of the lowest borrowing councils with only forty-six million of loans. Her leadership has ensured that council's financial department has been managed responsibly and most importantly with integrity. Deb, you will be missed, not only for your sense of humour, but your sincerity and intrinsic belief in explaining things to those around you, especially those who do not have a strong financial acronym in non-financial, easy-to-understand terms. You complicate financial information simply and dispel the myth that accountants don't have a sense of humour. This patience and dedication speak to Deb's dedication to ensuring everyone who has a role in safeguarding the financial future of Redland City understands exactly what entails. Her legendary memory for dates and numbers is renowned across the organisation and we're now going to have to rely on search functions, I'm afraid. One of the things most attributed to Deb throughout her time is her absolute belief that nothing is beneath her. She will stop at a moment's notice to make sure her colleagues are supported, encouraged and informed. She is the epitome of professional, sincere, honest and trusted advisor to all at council and she truly lives by the council values and her mantra of one team. Deborah is high, is held in high esteem and affection by the people she leads and those she has touched on her journey. Many people have left council, continue to stay in touch with Deb for her friendship and sincerity. I thank the staff who collaboratively helped to put these words together. But sincerely, Deb, from myself and other councillors, after many years of having you at the end of the phone in meetings, 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 and there may be one-on-one meetings, or replying to emails well after close of business, I, I don't know when you slept sometimes, I, we collectively thank you. Deborah, you are valued and we are grateful for your contribution you have made. We all wish you nothing but happiness and health and all the best and success for the next steps you take. And we thank you for the legacy you leave behind.
Thank you very much councillor Poglari. We now move to agenda item number five, receipt and confirmation of minutes. We now move on to the confirmation of minutes, so I'd like to note that the first minutes to be confirmed are the last minutes of the previous term of council. May I have a mover and seconder that the minutes of the general meeting held on the sixth of March twenty twenty-four be confirmed? Councillor Boblari, seconded by councillor Golly. Um, those in favour? unanimous, thank you. Agenda item number five point two, may I have a mover and seconder that the minutes of the post-election meeting held on the eighth of April twenty twenty-four be confirmed? Moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Hughes. Are there any comments in relation to the correctness of the minutes? No? All those in favour? Carry unanimously. Agenda item number six, declaration of prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflict of interests. Councillors are reminded of their responsibilities in relation to a councillor's prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflict of interest at a meeting. Details of these responsibilities are also outlined in the agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council. This means any prescribed or declarable conflict of interest relating to an item being discussed at a non-statutory meeting needs to be declared at the general or special meeting preceding that non-statutory meeting or workshop. A potential list of items to be discussed at all non-statutory meetings are made available to councillors with each workshop agenda before the preceding general meeting, so that this can be achieved. These declarations can also be made at any time throughout the meeting. And I'm asking if anyone has a declarable conflict of interest? Yes, Paul. Sorry, here's councillor Golly.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Through you to the CEO. A question was raised about the turned up submissions. And I'm positive that I've put in a submission on turned up, but I can't confirm it because it was so long ago, and I don't know where to find it. Where do we actually go to find these submissions? Because they were lodged to the state government, I'm quite certain they were. And I, how do we actually get confirmation that we've put submissions in?
Councillor, that would have been a submission that you made, not council made, so.
No, that's what I'm saying.
We don't have copies of those submissions.
It would have been done as a councillor though.
Well, we don't have the copies of those submissions, so if you, if you think you've got a declaration of interest and making a submission would likely mean that you should, at the very least, make a declarable conflict of interest, I'd suggest.
I'd need to confirm first, Andrew, primarily because I've answered that many emails on turned up. I actually can't recall whether I've made a submission or just answered an email. So I want to make sure that I'm covered.
Through you, Madam Mayor.
And I'm quite certain that the state did ask for submissions.
Thank you.
And whether they put them through as individual councillors.
Thank you councillor Golly. If I can refer to Andrew Ross.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillors. It's the Commonwealth Environmental Department that submissions were made under the EPBC for turned up. Councillors, if they had made submissions in their private capacity, they can contact that department. We can also put them in touch with the relevant people after this meeting.
Councillor Talty.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarity, and I believe this might be what we're referring to, and through you to confirm with Andrew Ross. Going back several years ago, this matter was raised, and at that time, submissions made to the state were not considered to be a conflict because it was about the declaration of the PDA, it wasn't about the Walker application. So, I don't believe I have one, but I believe that councillor Golly is not talking about the the federal one. I think he's talking about six or seven years ago with the PDAs, which would not be a conflict now, as I understand it. So, I'll just check that if I can, please.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, the declaration of the priority development area at Tunde Harbour was made in or about two thousand and thirteen, so over a decade ago. There is no matter on today's item on that declaration. I wouldn't think that submission regarding the priority development area would be a conflict of interest. Currently before a council matter, likewise, I can speak to the council after this meeting and try to source that submission here may have or may not have made.
Councillor Boglari.
Oh, through the chair to Andrew. If a councillor has made a submission though, if they haven't declared that submission at a general meeting, they can't then participate in future workshops. And maybe that's why councillor Golly is trying to seek clarification so that he can participate in future workshops. So, fearful, how can he solve that matter? Because I'm hoping that we have a workshop shortly to talk about changes.
Through you. Through you, Madam Chair. Ultimately, conflicts of interest are up to the councillors to identify, and if it's involving a council decision or participating in a future council decision, could represent a conflict of interest and that should be identified. The PDA declaration was made a decade ago. I'm not aware of any PDA decision involving council in the near future. What is involving council at the moment is a Commonwealth assessment of the environment under the EPBC. That would potentially represent a declarable conflict of interest if councillors wish to participate in future meetings on the EPBC process of the Tunde Harbour, not the PDA process.
Thank you, Andrew. So, prior to this meeting, I completed a declaration myself. So, everyone jumped in rather quickly, but I'm, I'm going to declare a conflict of interest based on advice I've received from the operational side of council. So, you'll see on your screen some information and I'll seek guidance through this process because obviously I haven't been through this process before. So my declaration of conflict is that I made a submission back in twenty twenty two as a resident prior to running or thinking about this camp, my, my political campaign, based on information I had to date. So, I understand, because it was quite some time ago, that that submission, I believe council's aware of it, and so is Walker, obviously. That submission was a page long and related to querying political donations, querying a process, querying broadly the provision of infrastructure and the benefits to our community, and noting the need for development of the port, but questioning the concept plan as it currently existed. So, that's, that's the context of the submission that I made back in twenty twenty two, and I'm raising it for council's consideration. I'm firmly of the position that the submission back in twenty twenty two doesn't provide an impediment to being able to discuss and vote on the matter in the public interest with an open mind.
Would you like me to take over the chair?
And so I understand, yeah, councillor Talty, you put the motion?
Yes, okay, thank you. So, councillors, the motion before you is that Mayor Mitchell may participate in future statutory meetings, including voting on the matter, non-statutory and information meetings of council in relation to Walker Corporation, Tunde Harbour Development. Can I see a show of hands, please?
You need a mover and a seconder?
Oh, sorry. Okay, mover, councillor Boglari, seconder, councillor Hughes, those in favour? Those in favour are councillor Boglari, councillor Golly, councillor Hewlett, councillor Hughes, councillor Coley, councillor Bishop. Those against are councillor Mitchell, councillor Rendells, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie. That is carried. I believe that was carried. Yeah, Mayor abstains. Thank you.
Are there any other conflicts of interest? Thank you. So we move to agenda item number seven, matters outstanding from the previous general meeting. The CEO will now give an update on the matters outstanding from previous general meetings. Thank you, CEO.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Item seven point one, the notice of motion to report on council's programmes related to the Environmental Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act will come to a future meeting of council. Item seven point two is the draft Birkdale Community Precinct, Local Government Infrastructure Designation Consultation Report, that will come to a future meeting of council. Item seven point three, the community residence matter, is listed in this agenda. It's confidential item at item twenty point one, so after that will be removed as a matter of outstanding.
We now move to agenda item number eight, which is a merrill minute. Councillors, as you know, have distributed a merrill minute, and I'd like to now move the motion, which is now on the screen. Oh, sorry, not yet. So, the motion resolves as follows. One, to request the chief executive officer to undertake a review of vehicle options for councillors under GOV zero one six B expenses reimbursement and the provision of facilities for councillors policy. And two, the report be brought back to council to a future general meeting for consideration. And the reason for this merrill minute is obviously just a point of, it was a point of my policy platform as I was running as a candidate, and also that that policy is now due for review. We have collectively had some discussion around that, and it was really good, positive discussion to see that councillors are willing and acknowledge that the policy is up for review and to provide a measure of, you know, looking into it and seeing what's now available and bringing that policy up to date. So, yeah, that's, that's the reason for the motion. Anyone speaking against? Sorry, called questions? Sorry, questions? Yeah, question, councillor Mitchell.
Thank you. Yes, good to see a review, but I, and it may be a possible amendment that I may suggest is the merrill minute, so it'll be through you. It is a reimbursement policy, councillors, and it's around vehicles. I think the definition of vehicle is far too narrow, it's not contemporary, doesn't fit with our corporate plan and doesn't fit with the benefits to, to the community. I think there are so many other ways of transportation and how we might go about our business. I understand councillor Rendell may have caught public transport today, I know he has been. I know I've been riding bikes and scooters at my own expense, I purchased those and no reimbursement. Why is that an interest to council in this reimbursement policy? Well, across our corporate plan, well firstly, as I go about my business at my, at my own expense, and that's okay in transportation, I may take my scooter over to Australia, I save the rate payer money by doing that, not taking a vehicle on the ferry, they're expensive matter, whenever I can. I may travel to and from work and not take up a car park, which is infrastructure. No such thing as a free lunch. And so the community can save money and be benefited by opening, or council can be, by opening up the definition of what may be fairly reimbursed in this policy, by not just paying, reinforcing it as motor vehicles, but other forms of transportation that fit very fairly and squarely right in the centre of going about our business in the community interest. It's happening now, and here's two examples sitting at this table I can think of, and you probably all caught P T at some point to get here, but that's outside the, the policy. Further benefits across, outside of reimbursement policy, I mentioned the corporate plan, and even state policy, livable neighbourhoods, green living and various other matters. So, I think if we're reviewing a reimbursement policy, and I know it's a reimbursement policy, I think we are narrowing the opportunities and the benefits and perhaps increasing costs unnecessarily by only staying with motor vehicles. And I would suggest, and if there's a way to amend this, that in the scope of any review, even public transport opportunities and personal mobility device opportunities be included as an addition, but not to increase costs, to actually increase benefits, reduce costs, make us one of the leading councils, I'm sure there's others doing it already, but fairly and squarely in how we go about our business. I do it already, getting to and from work and to site visits. That then is at my expense, been happy to do it because I, I enjoy it. And councillor Rendell's probably taken on other expenses that if we're looking for equity, we need to expand this policy to include those things. Thank you.
Councillor Boglari. Actually, before, before that, thanks, I'll ask the CEO to respond to those comments.
Just through you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm quite happy that when we do our review of the vehicle options, and it's really the whole policy that really needs reviewing, this is specifically about the vehicle options that we undertake to look into mobility devices, vehicles, public transport. We'll put that in our scope of a review, we can see what others are doing, we'll bring that back to council for further consideration. I don't think it needs an amendment, we can, we'll make sure that the review looks at those things and it'll come back to council.
Councillor Boglari.
Sorry, mate, could I just respond to that? Sorry, I'm through you, Madam Chair. There's been a lot of talk about transferring openness and signalling to the community. I think that's quite an important signal that we are including those things. And if, not interested in any words that don't mean something in any merrill minute or policy, but that is a change, it fits with our corporate plan, and I would suggest it might be worthwhile having something in there. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Boglari.
Oh, just going on, I'm, I'm happy for all modes of transportation to be included, like the CEO said, but we don't get reimbursed for purchasing our cars or anything, it's only the petrol. So, and public transport is already reimbursed to us if we go to the islands or anything, we already get that. So it would only be whatever petrol or electricity goes in the mobility scooters, I'm thinking, just like the car. So, I'm, I'm happy for all transportation to be, to be, and horses, yep. Go, go, go for councillor Golly, for that to be included. But I just want to make sure people didn't think, I just didn't want the public to think reimbursement went, if I buy my own car, we get reimbursed, because we certainly don't, it's only the petrol.
Thank you, councillor Boglari. Councillor Talty.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. My question's largely been answered. I thought that reimbursement of, of transport costs other than your vehicle were covered under a different policy. We get parking, we get ferries, we get a bus into the city. All those things are already covered, I understood.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it is, it is an expensive reimbursement policy, so to councillor Boglari's point, it's not purchasing assets for people, and we'll review other transport options under this policy, as councillor Mitchell has pointed out.
Sorry, councillor Rendells.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I note the changes that are being discussed and accepted in relation to the concept of transport as opposed to vehicles, but I'd like to also draw our attention to reimbursement. Coming from the islands where we have quite unique challenges in relation to transport, I cover four islands and the mainland, the lack of parking availability at Wyonam Creek. You know, that where, where a councillor elects to take a mode of transport that is significantly lower in cost than the provision of a car or the use of a fleet car, and those cost differentials are readily available. I'm focusing on the issue of reimbursement, because as it stands now, this, this motion relates to the reimbursement of the councillor. Whereas I believe that if a councillor makes a decision to utilise a more cost-effective transport strategy that is consistent with the policy of the department, well, the policy of the council, and deliver savings, there should be some incentivisation to redirect those savings to the division from which the council comes. So what I would like to see is not just looking at the reimbursement, but also looking at the savings, and that's important both as a councillor. My transport options would probably save maybe ten thousand dollars a year relative to the average cost of a car provision. That is not even approaching one thousandths of a decimal point on the council budget. But that amount of money, or even a proportion of that amount of money, is a significant contribution to my local community. And I would suggest that we look at how a component of those savings that are realised on a divisional basis can be put back into the division from which they've come.
Thank you, councillor Rendells. Would you like to make any response?
I, I, I think it would be unusual that we would, under Local Government Act, it is about the expense of doing the business, would be very unusual to be able to redirect savings to a particular division. That would probably not be possible, certainly under the policy, and I'm not even sure under the act. But every councillor votes on behalf of the whole council, and all funds really get directed back to the whole council for the whole council to make decisions about where those funds go. So, I don't think that would be possible, councillor Rendells.
Sorry, councillor Bishop.
Yeah, thank you. I think the, the discussion's very useful and it hopefully gives some guidance for officers to, to look at, for me, the two things are transparency and equity, and where we have access to, the ability to be able to be reimbursed, I think it's absolutely appropriate, and so I welcome this. Thank you. For me, the two things are transparency and equity and where we have access to the ability to be able to be reimbursed. I think it's absolutely appropriate and so I welcome this. Thank you.
Thank you councillors for your input and questions. And I now put the motion to vote those in favour. It's unanimous. We now move to agenda item number six, public participation in accordance with section six ten of the. Uh, council meeting standing orders, a period of fifteen minutes may be made available for resolution, by resolution. To permit members of the public to address the local government on matters of public interest relating to the local government. We have one person registered for public participation today. Can I have a mover and seconder that the meeting standing orders be suspended for a fifteen minute? Public participation segment to allow members of the public to address council on matters of public interest related to local government. Uh, councillor Boglari, councillor and seconded by councillor Rendells. Put the motion, those in favour. It's carried unanimously. And could I please, uh, welcome Gail Nemeth to please move forward to the lectern to address council? Thank you. And just before you begin, you may have noticed the signage in the chambers regarding public participation at meetings. It is council's usual practice to require any person wishing to address the meeting to state their name and suburb or organisation that they represent. And the subject they wish to speak about. This information is recorded in the minutes of the meeting, which is a public document available for inspection at council's administration building. And published on council's website. I also advise that the meeting is being live streamed and that by speaking you acknowledge and agree to this meeting. That this meeting can be seen live in the public domain. Any person addressing the meeting will, A, state their name and suburb or organisation that they represent and the subject they wish to speak about. B, stand unless unable to do so. C, act and speak with decorum. D, be respectful and courteous. E, make no comments directed to any individual council employee, councillor or member of the public, ensuring that all comments relate to council as a whole. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to consider each application on its merits and consider any relevant matter in making my decision. To allow or disallow a person to address the local government. Only those members of the public who have an approved application are able to do so. Details of how to apply are on council's website. Determine the maximum number of speakers based on the number of persons wanting to speak and the time available. Each speaker has a maximum of five minutes. Depending on the number of speakers and withdraw the approval to address council before the time period has elapsed. Debate or discussion cannot be entered into at this time. Can I have a mover and a second? Uh, sorry, that's later. So, Gail, I'll hand over to you.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Gail Nemeth. I'm principal of our parking spot group of the Southern Morton Bay Islands. I address you today on behalf of our parking spot and most people of the Southern Morton Bay Islands. Specifically, I speak for the six hundred and sixty-two islanders and thirty-six businesses. Who have legally assigned their voices to me to speak on their behalf. The matter is about their need, not desire. Their need for sufficient and affordable parking at Wyndham Creek adjacent to the ferry terminal. For the past sixteen years, we have raised this issue with council repeatedly. Via letters, submissions, meetings, petitions and even demonstrations. Regrettably, to date, Redland City Council and Redland's investment in corporation have decided to ignore islanders' concerns. Many islanders receive parking fines for illegally parking. Forced upon them by council that has not provided sufficient spaces and because ferries do not wait. Friends and family from the mainland are reluctant to visit islanders because they often cannot find a parking space. Our teachers, doctors. And other people who are essential for the support of islanders struggle every day to find a parking spot. At Wyndham Creek. Many islanders are not given option but to park in the streets within the precinct and to pay. To park in yards of private homes throughout the precinct, creating a continuing eyesore. What is needed is parking at Wyndham Creek adjacent to the ferry terminal for all islanders who have a reason to park. All islanders, islanders who park at Wyndham Creek have a parking spot available. All islands who need to park at Wyndham Creek should have a parking spot available on their return at any time. All islanders need the equivalent of an open garage. If an island has driven away from a parking space and cannot find one on their return, they cannot go home. Presently, islanders occupy about two thousand parking spaces throughout the Wyndham Creek precinct. Roughly twenty percent of the present islander population. This number includes the present five hundred and one spaces of Moore's Road Car Park. Noting that council has stated Moore's Park Road Parking was never intended to be a primary parking for islanders. When the population reaches twelve thousand, which will, we will need two thousand four hundred spaces and that is very soon. At the expected ultimate population of about two, twenty-two thousand islanders, we will need about four thousand four hundred. Parking spots at Wyndham Creek, all of these being, all things being equal. But council says it will build a multi-level car park station for eight hundred cars on two levels. With the possibility of adding one level further, um. With possibility of adding one, one further level in the future. This council will provide a maximum of one hun- one thousand two hundred parking spaces in the station. With perhaps another five hundred and forty-six outside the station in the open air. For a possible maximum of one thousand seven hundred and forty-six spaces. And these will be for staff and customers of the presently proposed ten thousand metre square of restaurants, cafes, grocery outlets. And possible medical precinct that will occupy the ground floor of the parking station. Islanders will have to fight for the remaining few parking places. The difference between what council is providing versus what is needed is astounding. A standalone three-level parking station for two thousand cars on the bitumen adjacent to the ferry terminal should be built and constructed. To allow future addition of another three levels. This would accommodate the four thousand cars needed when the island population reaches a match, maximum of approximately twenty-two thousand residents. The estimated cost of the parking station is approximately sixty million dollars. The council could fund this construction by borrowing the money at council terms for a period of twenty-five years. The borrowing could be repaid, for example, by charging an average parking fee of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars per space per year. For an internal rate return of five point five percent. The borrowing could be repaid, for example, by charging an average parking fee of two thousand, I'm sorry, I've done that. At five point five percent. This fee would repay the borrowing and provide about five hundred thousand per year for operating and maintenance costs. Note, this fee is too high for most islanders. To bring the fees to an affordable amount, a levy could be placed on the rates of all residents in the Redlands. For example, a levy of two, twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents per resident per year for the term of the loan. Would reduce the average parking fee to thirteen hundred dollars per space per year in total, in today's money. Reckoning that the availa- the affordability of, would be affordable for the islanders' lower socio-economic status.
Thank you very much, Gail.
In conclusion.
Uh, okay, I'll.
In conclusion, we ask council to rectify this matter urgently. Before construction within the area proceeds to fund. Unless this is done, council will be seen to have acted deliberately to isolate islanders. To prevent them from continuing the lifestyle they presently enjoy, to stop men from working. To stop professionals and service people from working on the islands and to stop family and friends from visiting islanders. The economic and socio-economic implications are dire. This must not happen. Thank you very much councillors. We're in your hands. Good morning.
Thank you, Gail, for the feedback and comments. Can I please have a mover and a seconder to the meeting standing orders to resume? Moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Colley. Um, those in favour? Moved unanimously. Moving to item number ten on the agenda, petitions and presentations. I've not been advised of any petitions or presentations. Uh, item, agenda item number six, order of business. Councillors, we do have a late item. Can I have a mover and a seconder? That the late item, confirmation of the date of Redland City Council's special budget meeting for twenty twenty-four be accepted into the agenda and discussed at item thirteen point four. Moved by councillor Boglari, seconded by coun- uh, by councillor Deputy Mayor Tolsey. And those in favour? Carried unanimously. Uh, agenda item number twelve, reports in the office of the CEO. We don't have any reports today. Agenda item number thirteen. So at thirteen point one. Uh, we do have, uh, do we have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Moved by councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Mackenzie. Uh, councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Um, I'm quite comfortable. It's all report, thank you.
Yes, councillor Hughes.
Thank you. Oh, I just ha- have a question through you, mayor, to our CFO. And I've just gone to page forty-three of the report. Don't know what page that is on diligent. And it's a statement of financial position. Uh, this is for our March minutes. And the March report. And I just wanted to talk about our finances. I think I've even. The, uh, finances with our cash flow. There's a beautiful graph there that's got the actual, uh, year-to-date, page forty-four, sorry. Page forty-four, total cash funding. And we talk about the cash funding for the annual revised budget. And we look at the percentage of the figure at the bottom of the page, page nine of fourteen of the report. And that figure's currently sitting at sixty-eight percent. And we understand that rates have just been, uh, issued. Uh, anyone check their letterbox and or their inbox. There's a lovely note there from council for you. I, I paid half. Thank you CFO. Um, could you please just give us an overview of that, what that sixty-eight percent represents? And going forward as we close out our financial year, how we, how you would anticipate that we're looking with our cash inflow. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you as chair. Thank you councillor Hughes for the opportunity to talk to this financial report. So yes, as you've talked to the pie charts at the bottom of the screen. Um, we are currently showing that from a cash perspective, at the end of March twenty twenty-four, um. The council has achieved sixty-eight percent. I think we might have been on the February report there. So just further down. And sixty-eight percent of that annual budget. So what that's saying is. At three quarters of the year, which is seventy-five percent in, um, year, year terms. The cash inflow, the cash money into council is sixty-eight percent, so slightly tracking behind. But I have had a look at this time last year because we always look at seasonal trends at council. And, um, by pure coincidence, we were tracking it sixty-eight percent at that time as well. What I can share with you is by the end of the year, we're absolutely confident that it will be above ninety. Last year, June twenty twenty-three. We came in thirty June at ninety-five percent of our budgeted cash inflows and I anticipate, um, no change to that. So by the end of the year. We'll be coming in on or within a whisker of the target. So, um, yeah, we, we do very well tracking our cash and there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes by. The team across the road to get, um, those forecasts, the budgets and the organisation works hard on its budgets, as you know, councillor Hughes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Chief Financial Officer, councillor Boglari.
Deb, we have to ask, because I believe this is your last general meeting. Can you give an overview of the financial situation at present, please? Because we're going to miss. You have been amazing. Every time we ever ask you a question in here, you give us such clarity, such depth of knowledge. Um, I can't let you get away the last time, but I think all councillors want to hear you. At least five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you as chair. Thank you councillor Boglari. Um, yeah, it's an honour to, um, represent. The team and, um, talk to the March financials. So as you've seen in this report. Um, we're tabling two monthly financial reports and that's purely a timing issue as you chose to have the general meeting on the sixth of March. So that was too early in March. To present the, uh, February financials, but to focus on the most recent ones in March, um, you can see that the cash balance is tracking. Very strongly because you've supported, um, putting fifty million dollars in a fixed term deposit. Um, so when you look at the cash and cash equivalents, that doesn't include fifty million dollars. So. There's a really strong balance sheet there for, um, you to work on moving forward, um, with your decisions in the current budget deliberations. You can see that the debts, I was, um, asked by councillor Bishop, I think, um, last week just to talk to debt. So. Um, debt is something that, and, um, we had some public participation, um, just talking about opportunities to borrow. Um, it is, um, governed by certain, um, legislation. So. Council can borrow up to a maximum term of twenty years. Um, the debt on our balance sheet at the moment, um, for the community is very low. And, and we saw that in the, um, draft financial management sustainability guideline where the department, the local government department. Set a draft K P I of four thousand dollars per capita. So it didn't, um, end up being a final K P I, but what it was saying at the time about eighteen months ago was. The department, um, that covers the whole of Queensland thought it was reasonable for a council to borrow four thousand dollars per capita. Um, across generations and that is financially sustainable. Um, I seem to recall councillor Bishop at the time, you asked me what we were tracking at that time. Um, we were under three hundred dollars. So Redland City Council, the debt per capita. Per member of Redland City Local Government Authority was less than three hundred dollars at the time. Um. That is the same, um, calculation today. So based on, um, what the Queensland, um. Government Statisticians Office publishes for the population. Um, it was under three hundred dollars per capita for Redland City. Um, last year, thirty June twenty twenty-three, and the forecast, um, one percent increase the population. If you choose to borrow the twenty million dollars that you've budgeted for at the end of June. Um, if we draw that down, which I am sure, um, we will as a council. Um, that will still mean that this council is less than four hundred dollars per capita. So the debt on the balance sheet, um, forecast for thirty June this year will be less than four hundred dollars per capita for Redland City. And a previous draft K P I was four thousand. So I'm trying to give you that perspective just to, to bring it to life a wee bit. Um. I can talk to other things. It'd be remiss of me not to close out, um, an overview by saying. You should be very proud councillors that, um, the CEO has led the organisation to the highest capital delivery. Um, ever at Redland City Council and we're only at the end of March. So as you can see in the figures, we've actually exceeded. Um, last month, in, in February, we exceeded eighty million dollars. Um, the, the organisation's now exceeded ninety million dollars of capital delivery and there's still three months to go. Um, what an incredible achievement and that isn't driven by, um, the area that I oversee. So congratulations CEO and ELT colleagues. Um, that is, um, really showing that the approach that you have taken as councillors, the trust you've placed in us over the last few years about. Having a large capital programme, having lots in that infrastructure pipeline, which we can then go and seek funding for. And get shovel ready and deliver even during COVID times over the last four years, um, has worked. So congratulations. I'll, um. I'll finish on that and thank you for the opportunity to talk through the March financials. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to sum up?
Just by saying we're in great shape and things to difficult again.
Thank you. Uh, can I put the motion, those in favour? Carried unanimously. Now moving to item thirteen point two, Audit and Risk Management Committee, seventh of March twenty twenty-four. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Hughes, seconded by councillor Bishop. Uh, councillor Hughes, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just very briefly, thank you, mayor. The Audit Risk Management Committee, seventh of March, uh, was a, a, a very brisk meeting. Uh, the, the meeting was brought forward and, and hour to accommodate the busy diaries of so many of us. I did leave a little early as noted in the minutes, but as always, the conversations and the questions. Are so valuable to our organisation. But as always, the conversations and the questions are so valuable to our organisation. And I again commend the uh work that's done behind the scenes, similar to our finance team, the enormity of the work that goes into these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Sorry, any speakers against? Nope. I put the motion, those in favour, carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Remind me each time. Thirteen point three, nomination of the representative of the Local Government Association Queensland Policy Executive. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Mitchell. Uh councillor uh Mackenzie, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh the LGAQ is the peak body representing the seventy-seven councils across Queensland. Um they administer a policy executive consisting of a group of mayors and councillors who are elected by their peers to represent all those regions across Queensland. And the association's policy executive is responsible for the determination of the association's policy of their members. The nomination is for the southeast que- southeast district southern region, which comprises of Redland City Council, Logan City and Gold Coast Council. Um and Redland City has sat on that policy executive for the last two terms. So it's now my pleasure to nominate the new mayor of Logan, John Raven, to represent the southeast district southern region on the policy executive. And this nomination comes with the support of our fellow district member, Gold Coast Council.
Thank you councillor Mackenzie. Any speakers against? Thank you. I now put the motion, those in favour. Carried unanimously. Agenda item number thirteen point four, there is a late item, it's confirmation of the date of Redland City Council's special budget meeting for twenty twenty-four, as we discussed earlier. Do I have a mover for the recommendation? Councillor Tolty, thank you. And a seconder, councillor Gollay, thank you. Councillor Tolty, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh it's in the report, simple, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Speakers against? No. Any question? Sorry, yes councillor Mackenzie.
Do we just have to have in that motion at point two to endorse um the man? To does it have to have a name in the? Oh, I've jumped ahead, my apologies.
So those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. Uh agenda item number fourteen, advocacy major projects and economic development, fourteen point one, twenty twenty-four Australian Local Government Association's motion. So fourteen point one, do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Oh, what's the amendment? Uh okay, so yeah, just bringing to everyone's attention that there is a slight amendment in uh including my name now. Um councillor Bocleary, seconded by councillor Tolty. Yes councillor Gollay. Oh sorry, actually coun- councillor Goll- yeah, okay councillor Gollay, would you like to speak to me?
Thank you. Um like councillor Mackenzie just spoke about the local Local Government Association, this is the Australian um conference and we all get to send our motions. And when we can get our motions up and all the councillors are working collaboratively, it really strengthens and is more a strategic approach. We're putting up actually five motions. All of them are seeking clarity around certain points or actually more funding um for our area. And I especially like the one about the um the local government financial assistance grants because that has gone down over forty-three percent over the years and and um the CEO is agreeing there because that really severely impacts our restrictions and constraints on what we can deliver um to our community. So we've got five motions there and you can, all the details are in the report, but they're all seeking clarity and trying to empower local governments to get that extra benefit financially. So hopefully that will be accepted down there and then strategic strategically, um we can go ahead.
Thank you councillor.
Getting action.
Councillor Mitchell, you had a question before? No, no, no. Councillor Gollay, sorry.
Uh thanks, Madam Chair. Uh just for what councillor Bocleary said, especially those federal assistance grants uh affect um all councils nationally. And you'll find that it'll probably all get bundled up into one being hit from every single council across the country. Um just in what we discussed the other day though, Madam Mayor, um you'll be the primary delegate, but do you need to nominate a secondary? Because I'll guarantee you down there, there'll be other people who'll drag you away for meetings at the time and you may not be able to be in there for the vote. Or do you just want to do it on the day?
I think you can only nominate, I think it's only, you can only nominate one to Alga. I think the LGAQ through you, Madam Mayor, is two. Um and I think you could probably, if you had to, delegate that on the
On the day?
On the day.
Yeah, alright. Because you you will, there'll be all sorts of people that will drag you away for meetings just at that time when you're meant to vote.
Councillor Hughes.
Uh thank you, uh thank you councillor Gollay. Ye- yes, it has been our tradition over the last few years that I've attended and um not every year but every other year, et cetera, that literally you are not on your own. There are other councillors that go, so it's it's the matter of, we'll squabble over that um little clicker that we'll all be there to support you, who whichever councillor's go, so you will not be on your own. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Any other questions? All good. Um so I put the motion, those in favour, carried unanimously, thank you. So agenda item number fifteen, we don't have any reports from Community or Customer Services. We don't have any reports in agenda item number sixteen, reports from Infrastructure and Operations. Uh agenda item number seventeen, um I've not been advised of any notice of intention to repeal or amend a resolution. Agenda item number eighteen, I've not been advised of any notices of motion from councillors. Agenda item number nineteen, I'm not aware of any urgent business. So we move to confidential items, uh which is agenda item number twenty. So we're now moving into confidential portion of our agenda in accordance with section two fifty-four J of the Local Government Resolute Regulation twenty twelve. To discuss the matters listed in the agenda, we must move into closed session. Can I have a mover and a seconder?
Madam Mayor, if I could, uh I'm not sure a coun- I'm not sure if councillors need to move in. Would we just ask if we may be able to just move straight on to voting?
Yeah, okay, excellent. Does anyone want to move into confidential? Yes councillor Hughes.
Ju- just regarding, there was a slight amendment to the motion, do we need to go into confidential to discuss that?
Um I I will be happy to move that amended motion as has been suspected, expected.
Excellent. So as a res- as a result of that discussion, we don't have to move into confidential, so we can move straight to item twenty point one. The, you will note councillors, there's an amendment on your screens. Yep, coun- sorry, I'll move for any second, I'm sorry. Move for a second, councillor Mitchell moving, councillor Tolty seconding. Uh put the motion, those in favour, carried unanimously. Uh item number twenty point two, do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Hughes, seconded by councillor Tolly, Colley. Put the motion, those in favour, carried unanimously. Thank you very much councillors, I now move to closing the meeting. Please ensure your attendance has been logged in diligent boards. I now declare the meeting closed at ten fifty-two AM.